All right. Welcome, everybody. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mary's rushing right through. Welcome, everybody. I don't have my agenda in front of me yet, so if you wouldn't mind, thank you very much. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for the October 8th, 2024 special meeting? The October 15th, 2024, and October 28th, 2024, regular meetings, please.
I'm approval of the minutes from October 8th, October 15th, and October 24th.
Okay, motion from John. Can I get a second, please? Whitney?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any questions or comments, changes to these minutes? All right, all those in favor approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Aye. All those who are not in favor, say nay. Okay, everybody said aye, right?
Abstentions.
All right. Thank you, abstentions. Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Right, motion carried. We've approved the minutes. Any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, any comments from visitors regarding agenda items? Hello, visitor.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the student representatives' report.
Yes, we're going to switch things a little bit until the first of the year. I think I share that we have to... First of all, I want to welcome Mr. Nam Noon. Good to see you at your first meeting. We have Ms. Hensica and Varshney as our student representatives. Varshney is currently taking courses at UConn on Monday night. She'll be joining us after the next Board of Education meeting. And the both will kind of resume our typical representative report. In the meantime, I have met with both of them, and I will continue to meet with them, to talk... And we talked about ways to have them more kind of engaged and involved in our Board of Education meetings. Traditionally, our representatives have attended the first meeting of the month and have given a wonderful report to us. We will be seeing both of our student representatives at both board meetings each month when they're able to make it. Also, both have expressed an interest in some subcommittees, so I've reached out to the chairs, and they will be joining the subcommittees. I know Hensica has an interest in curriculum, specifically with artificial intelligence, correct? Yes. And policymaking, I believe. Yes. And Varshney also has an interest in curriculum as well. So Mrs. Light will be inviting them, and they'll be engaging in those conversations as well. Hensica, I don't want to take the floor away from you. If there is anything else you wanted to report on today, you certainly can.
I actually wanted to bring up the point of us becoming voting members, because I know in a lot of other... Not parties. A lot of other committees in East Granby students are voting members, and I know for EGGT, we're also a voting member. So I was wondering, like, I don't know...
I'm sorry, what was that, our organization that you just referenced?
EGGT. East Granby, we are together committee.
Okay, thank you.
Another committee in East Granby. And I was wondering if there's like a possibility of us becoming voting members and be like making an amendment, me and Varshney.
Do we have a policy?
We do, and I shared with both that we'll look at the policy and see what we can do to make that, to kind of move in that direction. It would be a change for us. We haven't had our representatives as voting members. I do believe in some districts, they are. So I'll have to do a little kind of work on some policy language that would kind of allow that. And in the meantime, you know, Hensica asked a really great question, like, how do I participate? How do I participate without, like, interrupting? So what I shared with them is when we ask if there's any more comments, that'd be a great opportunity. If they had something to add, they can do it at that time.
So when you're contemplating being a voting member, would it just be your one vote for you as the student representative?
I was thinking one for me, each of me and Varshney, so like, rather than coming to consensus, we can each have like individual opinions and, you know, share them.
Gives us a number of votes, which would be helpful. Okay. All right, very good.
I mean, if we... I'm sorry, if we were a charter town, and if the Board of Ed was under charter, then we could consider... The town could then consider that.
Yeah.
But we're not a charter town. And so we're under the statutes. We elect our board members. Our board members are elected by the community. And without some sort of change to our formation of our board, you know, it's not a matter of the same. We'd have to change the composition of our board.
Okay.
And I did tell him I would look into it, because I wasn't sure of how that would work.
So that you know, we played that game about... How long's it been since Joe? We played that game seven years ago, eight years ago. At that time, what we were doing was we were trying to reduce the board from nine members to seven.
Got it.
Right? To take care of the absentee issues that we were having. So it would have... It would have to go... Well, it would be a difficult process. That's all.
Okay.
Not that we wouldn't want you to, but...
Well, thank you for that insight, John. I appreciate it. Anything else from the student representative?
Good.
Thank you. That's just my notes.
Oh, okay, sir. All right. This... Bob sent me this email right before the meeting. Can you report? This is him speaking now. Bob Paskowitz, our chairperson. Can you report that I met with C-Tech Solar today at the middle high school to explore solar options that we may have at our schools? I shared electric bills from all three schools. C-Tech is a commercial solar company located in Bloomfield. So I told him I would share that with you clearly, while still looking into our solar options. Any questions on that or comments? All right. Let me see. Superintendent's report.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. First on the agenda under 4A is bus update. We have all of our buses getting to Seymour School. Probably the latest is 8:23. We do one day at 8:25. The school day starts at 8:30. They're all kind of within five or six minutes of each other getting into school. The ride home will continue between 40 minutes and one hour from the time they leave the first school, which is Seymour, and then pick up the children at All Grove, and then get on the road until everyone is home. So I think at this point, if that's not acceptable, then I'd be happy to go look at kind of the cost for an additional bus and what some of those bus routes would look like. I don't see that changing anymore. You know, I don't think we're going to get down to whatever the goal is, if it's 45 minutes or 40 minutes. But including the time from Seymour to All Grove on the way home, we do have a couple buses that are in the one hour. Not every day, but on some days.
I'm sorry, which bus route's an hour?
I don't want to give misinformation. I don't know off the top of my head. I think Bus 4 might be one of them, just because I've been specifically tracking Bus 4.
Are there any extenuating circumstances that bring it to an hour, like having to pull over and discipline students or...
You know, there is some of that, but I think that's always... Bus 4 does have more of the traffic, you know, patterns. There are... There was a student or there's some families that probably were not on the route last year that make for a longer route. But I think all in all, I don't think that's going to get any shorter than what it is right now.
I'm sorry, so you said 40 minutes, and then you said an hour, so...
Well, it's the span of all six buses.
Right, so... We should be shooting for what, though?
So I understood the 40 to be more... I could be wrong, so you can correct me, but I understood the 40 to be in the morning, and then the hour up to an hour in the afternoon. Is that not correct?
No, our policy says 45 minutes.
I'm not talking about the policy. I'm talking about what is...
Oh, what they were hoping for? What did you say, the morning?
Yeah.
I didn't track the morning. I know what time they're getting to school.
And they're getting to school at least seven minutes before school starts.
Correct.
Now, how... What changed that they're getting to school earlier?
I believe we've had a couple of families that are not taking the bus, but I don't know.
Because I know I've expressed last two meetings, my concern was the students at Harvest Lane. So still, if they're getting... They still... And if the bus is leaving a few minutes earlier, then now they're on the bus for 75 minutes. Do you get what I'm saying? Like, I know there are people... Obviously, I want my daughter to school on time also, but my thing was advocating for all the kids on the bus. And those kids at Harvest Lane are... There's some All Grove kids, and if they're getting on the bus at 7:23, I think is what it says online, and they're not getting to All Grove till 8:35, or even if they're getting picked up earlier now, that's why I'm wondering what's the change. We still haven't changed their bus length at all. That's a long time for an All Grove kid to be on the bus.
Do you know what bus number that is?
Well, Bus 4, but now they're on Bus 7.
So the students you're talking about were Bus 4, but now Bus 7?
Well, they're all... The Bus 7... It's Bus 4, but they're on the actual physical Bus 7 now. They've been using Bus 7 for Bus 4.
Oh, I see what you're saying. But it's Bus 4 by a row.
Yes, so Bus 4. So this has been my concern since August, when that first meeting, when Tim and Marcy were here, is we have kids in the morning on the Bus 4. And some days, it was 75, 80 minutes at the beginning, and some days still, if the bus is now leaving earlier. That's why I'm wondering, what time does the bus, the first stop is Harvest Lane, what time are they getting there? That's been the question I've been trying to figure out for a while, because online, I think it says 7:22, 23, and we know if they're not getting to All Grove till 8:30, 8:35. That's a long time.
So would you like me to look at another bus?
I mean, I was never forecutting a bus, so, I mean, obviously, because it affects my bus, but that's the board's... That's the board discussion.
I have a question, just for my own education. What's the bus company's role in logistics planning? Is it a partnership? Are they... We're paying them for a service, and I know our administration isn't... You're not trained in logistics, although I'm sure it's part of the coordination, but why aren't they here?
They primarily... They do the bus routes. And then if there's anything that's extenuating or, you know, different than our... Certainly, our bus coordinator, you know, helps out, but the bus company does divide...
So if we're unhappy with the service provided to us, why are we not pushing on... And maybe you are, but why aren't they speaking up to it?
Well, isn't it contractually said that it's... Because Bob brought this up the other day, or one of the last meetings. The contract says one thing, but our policy says something else, 45 minutes versus an hour?
Yeah.
And if they're staying within that hour...
Both numbers... There's both numbers kind of within both areas.
Yeah. Contractually, I think it says an hour, even though we say 45 minutes. The policy that we have is 45 minutes. I think that's what it was.
Yeah.
But either way, they're falling within those two...
Yeah.
The range there, so...
Yep. Anecdotally, I can say, just from my commute into work, I get caught behind a couple of the buses, and I notice, at least for high school and middle school, generally, the kids all congregate at the end of the road, and I've seen... I've gotten, as we're sitting there, waiting, 90% of the kids are there, and then some of the kids who live within eyesight of the bus...
Then they meet.
They take that as a signal, as the bus is loading, now it's time for me to leave my home and start making my way to the bus. So that adds another minute or so. And I know this because I sit there waiting, watching them stroll to the bus. So that's another element to that I've just noticed.
Sure.
Could we... Is it worth setting up like a one-time meeting? I mean, there's a lot of questions between the tracker, logistics of route planning. Should we just have a meeting with one of the representatives from the bus company?
Sure.
Along with a couple of board members and administration, just to hash out all the questions?
Sure.
I'd like to see us do that next week, if possible, and I'd like someone to put forth a proposal at our December 9th meeting, if we're meeting on the night, I think we are. And I'd like to see it as an action item to approve the addition of a bus. But rather than put it that way, I would agree with Ricky, that it would be a good idea to do something next week, something that's convenient. I don't think the whole board needs to do it, but, you know, two or three open minds would be good. If we could have someone from the company, great, but I don't think it's really their call on it. I think it's ours. I mean, we do our own... If I'm not mistaken, we do our own routing. We know where our students are, you know, where they're coming from and where they're going to at the end of the day, you know? But I think it's crazy to have anybody that's five, six, seven years old be on a bus more than 45 minutes. It just doesn't...
Doesn't have size.
It doesn't sit well with me.
Size district, we have.
Yep.
Can we get that for the next meeting, too? Because maybe the bus thing is wrong. Maybe they're not getting picked up till 7:40, but I can't imagine, because it has to do the whole route. Can we see what time they're actually getting to Harvest Lane? Because that would help us determine how long that bus route is.
I thought we were talking about, in a couple of meetings ago, tracking that bus route and seeing if it could be changed to shorten up the times, what am I remembering?
You are.
Yeah. Was that done?
We have one stop that has a good number of children, like 20 children. So if we move that bus stop to another bus, all we're going to do is shift the timeframe.
The delay. Yeah. So we thought about it, and we said... And we looked at the numbers, and we said, that's just going to, you know, shift the problem to another... Okay. Situation. Are you getting a lot of complaints from people about people... Kids being on the bus for too long?
No.
Okay.
Doesn't mean it's not going to start now, because I said that, but...
I don't think we need to have complaints, just logically look at it and suggest that it seems to be more than...
Well, it's a cost. It's a cost to the town, John. That's why we took it out of the budget.
But there's a lot of people from that bus now picking up and dropping off because of the bus time, so that's... That, which you would think it would actually shorten the time, but shockingly, it doesn't for some reason. I mean, it can skip two roads, and for some reason, I feel like it gets later sometimes. So there's a lot of people not paying taxes and not using the bus. And I bet that bus, if you look at the past month, I bet it's significant numbers of people not taking the bus, or more so. I mean, I...
Okay. I will do my best to schedule a meeting next week. Who would from the board would like to participate in that meeting?
I'll do it.
I'll do it.
Most likely, it'll be during the day.
I'm not traveling.
Will it be during the afternoon? Yeah. I mean, I'd like to be... I've been advocating for this bus for... Since it was on the list to be cut, so I'd like to...
Don't we do... Don't we need Mr. Phelan to be here?
Yes.
Is there anyone else?
Well, a member of the bus company was named earlier, but I can't nail down what the problem is. It just seems like we have too few buses. I'm not sure it's something the bus company could even deal with. It's like... It's not like they're going extra... From what I understand, it's not like they're going extra slow or stopping at the bus stop for five extra minutes after all the kids are on.
But if I have it right, they're not the people that are setting the route.
We set the route. Is that what your point is?
Right.
Yeah?
The district sets the route.
M&amp;J does the route.
They do.
Okay.
And we... I had a discussion, too, whether they do it manually, or I sent some examples to a couple of people, but there's so many AI route planning that if it's somebody with a little compass and projector and a string going around mapping it, it's like, there's a lot of better options out there today. You can tell how many vehicles you got.
Not necessarily in terms of routes, but in terms of having AI do the routing.
Some don't make sense. You've got the speed limits and stop lights and...
Right.
I mean, people would not come up with it, but, I mean, look at how Amazon operates.
Yeah.
They don't even know what stops they're taking every day, and it spits it out.
But they have the luxury of going anywhere they want to. The buses don't.
Sends it right to their GPS, and they go where the computer tells them to base on the stops they have that day.
Well, it'd be nice if we could do that with a school bus, too, but then they're going to be getting to different stops at different times every day, and people aren't going like that either, so...
No, no. No, it'd be steady, but it would... There's a lot of ways to optimize.
Maybe we should just have somebody from the bus company if we can get them just to do it all at once.
I think that would make sense.
Yeah.
Because essentially, all I'm doing is I hear something, I go there. I hear something, I come back, then I hear something different. I'm constantly, you know, Mr. Phelan and I and Mr. Gustafson are... So I think it just makes sense to have the...
Yep.
Bus company. So I'm looking, if you... If we're looking for next week, I'm really not available after school until Thursday?
I can do school hours if it's Monday or Friday, because I work from home. I don't think that works for other people.
I could try after school on Thursday.
Would it be virtual? Could you do it virtual during... If you were going to do it during the school day?
I can do whatever you want me to do.
Except dance.
I could dance.
I bet you could dance.
I could dance.
Don't underestimate me.
Very funny.
It's concerned.
If it's during the day, between 9:30 and 1:30, what's best for me?
Sorry, I don't wait in service a long time. Next Thursday afternoon?
The other times I'm on a bus.
We do have a budget meeting next month. Is that us? No, sorry. I could do any time after 2:30 next Thursday. Anyone else?
What was that?
Anything after 2:30 on next Thursday.
Would it be virtual?
I could make it virtual. We just need to decide, because if we're going to have a quorum, that it's actually a board meeting, it'd be a special board meeting, depending on how many people attend.
I would like to attend, if possible, but it would have to be virtual if it's before 3:00.
Any other feedback? I can schedule it for any time after 11:00.
I'm sorry, you're going to schedule it as a special meeting? So do you want to have a quorum, or do you not want to have a quorum?
I think I'd prefer not to have a quorum.
Okay.
Who was interested? One, two, three.
Did you get all the names?
You know, coming or no?
Okay, so it was Drew?
No.
Yes. Amanda?
I would make a quorum.
Lynn?
No.
No?
No. We don't want a quorum, folks.
Record event?
For me, all depends on the time you end up doing it.
Okay.
How many can we...
Four, right?
Four.
Four. So one, two, three, four.
Sounds good.
I have Drew, Amanda, Lynn.
Mm-hmm.
Ricky.
And Ricky.
That'd be the final four.
Okay, I will keep the four of you posted on that. I'll reach out to the bus company. Thank you. I am looking for a board member. As Chairperson Paskowitz shared, he met with a solar company. I have talked with our first select person, as well as our second select person, Ms. Thompson, look for two things. One is also solar. We actually have a meeting tomorrow, and I would like if somebody else would be interested in participating with some solar conversations. And also, kind of looking to the future, we have reached out... Actually, Lisa did a lot of legwork for me. Thank you, Lisa. To a modular company. With the builds in town, not really sure what the impact, if any, might be to our schools. I think it's wise to plan. We are using a company for some preliminary information that is working in some neighboring towns, so they're kind of in our area with nearby districts with some mobile classrooms. I would like to... There's actually a lot that goes into it, because with East Granby, you have to do some... You have to do soil testing. You know, if we're looking at All Grove School, for instance, you have to have a bathroom in there if it's connected to the school. There's a lot of factors to consider, plus, of course, plumbing and electrical and all that. So I just felt it would be a good idea to start that process, and if not needed, fine. But if it is needed, at least we have the groundwork, at least an understanding set. So if anybody has an interest in kind of those two conversations, you can either let me know now, or if you want to think about it, and, you know, email me the meetings that I have met with First Select Person and Ms. Thompson. We have met about, I think it's the first and third Monday, about 9:30. And I'm sure we can do a virtual option.
I'm sorry, that's on the solar, that you're meeting with the Board of Solar.
That is correct.
So all the meetings will be during the day? I just don't want to add anything else to my evenings.
Sure. I mean, I'm happy... The modular ones, I'm happy to make during the day, sure.
Yeah, if they're during the day, I can do that, because I was involved a little bit with, when we first started doing solar a while back, and then that kind of fell off a bit.
Those are definitely during the day? Like I said, I believe it's the first and third Mondays at 9:30 that we're having the solar conversations.
Yeah, Mondays are probably the best day of the week.
I'm interested in participating and looking at enrollment and looking at the build-out of the town of East Granby, as it might affect the district.
Thank you.
I'll be interested in enrollment, too, if I don't know how many people you need.
That'd be fine. Just so you know, in a little background, we have a company called Nesdeck that does our enrollment projections, and they're actually been, you know, pretty accurate for our planning purposes. We are currently putting together that data, and we usually get the report around January, when they project. So it's really going to depend on what has been established with the town in terms of building permits, because they only base their projections on known or established building permits. So again, we're kind of like in this weird space with my understanding of when the rentals will begin with our new builds. Again, I just don't want to get, you know, caught. But I'm also not an overreactor, so if there is no impact, then great. Or if we can move the kids, if the kids that come to us are, you know, throughout various grades, you know, fabulous. But I just want to be sure that we are... Have some planning done. Okay?
I'm sorry. I could see that starting after the first meeting.
I believe that is the date.
Look at you, John.
I believe that's the date. Okay, thank you.
I almost...
Looking for extra credit. Tough semester.
Okay, item 4C, I just wanted to share with spring softball. It does not look like we're going to have enough students to field a team this year. We have about eight students. We have six returning and two freshmen. Our numbers have been decreasing a little bit over time, and I actually reached out to one of our town residents who does a lot of coaching of softball, to kind of see what we're looking... Excuse me. What our numbers are, like with our team that we play with Granby in the summer and such. So it looks like we have eight students coming who are interested in playing softball. So the idea would go to looking at a co-op team with most... Well, I'm not sure yet, but it most likely will be wins or locks.
It should go to Granby.
Well, you have... I'm not sure if Granby is able to take a co-op.
There's ways to do all of that stuff. It's...
If they have a full team, then we can't co-op.
Their participations.
We can look into it. I mean, I'm not so into what to...
That, to me, is the logical one.
I want the kids to play. Right, but I don't know if it's allowable, because if they have a full team...
Yeah.
I think actually, Mr. Andrews, I think with CIAC, a full team might actually be nine or 10.
It's nine.
It's...
When... Because we went... When we went through that before.
Yep.
And, yeah, that was...
Which is hard to field a team with nine kids.
Yeah, Granby only had nine at the time, and we were pushing eight or nine at the time, and they wouldn't let us do it, and then fortunately ended up with a couple more, but, yeah.
I can have the athletic director look into that, but I...
Yeah.
Does CIAC allows a school to... Or does the conference allow a school to opt to play a JV-only schedule? Does CIAC allows a school to, or does the conference allow a school to opt to play a JV-only schedule?
I believe so.
It's possible. I'm not fully aware of it, but usually the NTRIP was the one that pushed first. It never even got to CIAC. And NTRIP was the one that stopped it.
Well, I know CIAC has to approve every co-op, so
Yeah, but it never even got out of the conference when we tried it before when we were right on the edge.
Stop the effort to co-op.
Yeah, and yeah, there was a lot of stuff that went on there during that, but I know Granby's already, they've been on the cusp for a few years now too. They, they're right on the edge. To me, that would make a reasonable
The numbers are actually decreasing even in big schools.
This is crazy.
Teams here.
We're not that far removed from being in the final game.
I was just asking.
With Jenna Hartman.
Yeah.
Is there an inclination as to why? Is it just because our enrollment rate's down? It hasn't been publicized or the costs?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't think so.
It's been going down.
Yeah.
Has, has all athletic participation?
Certain sports and then certain sports has been increasing. Like there's, like I'll give you an example, women's lacrosse has been increasing.
Lacrosse has been growing a lot and that's what's taken some of them.
Okay, so conflict could be
Some of them, that and the increase in other travel sports. So then you get to that, this high school level and you got to start paring it down if you want to be serious in one sport.
So you're playing soccer year-round instead of playing softball?
Yeah, I mean, there's some, like my daughter is just the opposite. She played softball year-round and soccer just in the spring. But there's a lot more soccer players that have put softball away come high school for various reasons. They'll play basketball and soccer and not softball to take that one off.
What's the reason for them denying a co-op?
Number of students.
If you're both at the very minimum.
You have to be below minimum. If you have nine students and that's what it takes to field a team, they say you have qualified to have a team. Well, what if somebody gets hurt? Doesn't matter.
You go, you go to the, you go to the field and you've got seven young ladies ready to play.
By then, it's already too late. That's the problem.
And is that then declared a forfeit?
Yeah. The team, the, the, the numbers, the team with seven, they may play just as a scrimmage, but the other team automatically wins by forfeit, yeah. And that's, that's the struggle that you have with it.
Inner squad type of thing. Borrow a couple of players.
Just to play the game. But if you have, that's the way the rules are set up. If you have at least nine or whatever sport it is, you have a minimum, then you're not allowed to co-op.
That is true.
When's the decision on that?
Well, the, we would need to apply to CIAC for a co-op. And then once the CIAC approves it, then it comes to the Board of Education for approval.
So
And there's discussions with other
It would have to take place by February then, or March?
I would say so, sure, because that's when they'll be starting soon after.
Mark, what do you think?
What's that?
Like, so when, when would be the cutoff?
Do you know what? You have to talk to conference on that because I don't know what their, their stipulations are. I know when we were going through it a couple of years ago, our A.D. and the Granby A.D. brought it to conference in January, I think it was.
We approved the tennis co-op for boys, which is another spring sport in February at a board meeting.
Yeah, yeah, it was January or February, somewhere around there. I know they started to push it in December, talk about it a lot.
Yeah, well, the earlier the better.
Yeah.
Because we do have, we have conditioning now that's allowed, so there are teams that are doing some preseason conditioning and to give the students and, you know, so that they know what's, what's going on in the spring. But I will ask the A.D. to look, you know, at that other district. I'm thinking they probably did.
Now, do the students, the players themselves understand this? Like, do they understand that if they have nine players, like the logistics that go behind it, like if one of them gets hurt, then now they're forfeiting? Like, do they understand that?
Does who?
The players themselves, the athletes. Because the reason I say that is, is this something that, you know, as being a board member, student board member, can you go back and be like, listen to my, my fellow students and athletes, this is what we're up against, right? Like, we're up against now going, teaming up with a, with a co-op with another team that we may or may not be vibing with, or can we recruit some more athletes together and build the team? And build their athletic department, right? Is that, is that like a thing?
I've only done indoor track and cross country and those we play, I would go complete full team, so I honestly don't know.
It's
In regards to
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Like in regards to like going back to your fellow athletes, like this is what, this is what you guys are kind of up against right now.
Yeah.
You know, how can we recruit more players? I don't know, is that allowed? Is that like a thing?
You can do that. You can go and do that. There's a lot more to it than just that.
Yeah.
Based on what I saw when it happened to my daughter and her team.
There are a lot
Go ahead.
There are a lot of conflicts between like people choosing one sport because obviously it's a big time commitment, so you can't do multiple practices and you have to go to practice every single day and some are more time-intensive than others and I'm not sure about softball, like how time-intensive it is, but it could be just a choice that maybe Drew's going to take up another sport that's a bit less, especially in high school, it's really stressful.
I think it's a great example of using our representatives to go back and, and be the voice, you know, for the saying, here's what it is and being the voice for the student body. So certainly, you know, just saying, here's what I learned last night at the meeting, you know, like there's people on the cusp, this is your opportunity. Like, yeah, I hear what you're saying. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, kind of being, you know, you're being that, that voice for the students to us, but then vice versa, like, okay, this is kind of like what we're up against as a student body, as athletes. Like, I understand your passion and you want to be here and play and have a team. What can we do differently? How can we?
And we're not saying you, you don't have to actually recruit, just letting students know the information from the meeting because obviously they're not sitting at home right now watching our meetings.
Yeah. I was a softball player through my entire life, so I like, I got it, like I, from time I was little to college, I played. So I understand like the, the passion that some of these girls do have. And I'm multiple sports, so like going from one sport to the next and still an honor roll and what have you. Like, it can work and it can happen, no matter what size school you're at.
There's other variables involved here.
Yeah, I'm sure Connecticut is much different.
No, I'm saying when it comes to our softball team, I'm sure there are other variables that
And I think it's a good point about competing priorities. I know with my kids in middle school, it was they didn't have enough for a team and their friends would persuade them to come on, do basketball. Okay, fine, but now in high school, there's debate and there's this and there's the theatrical production and there's more competing priorities where they want to focus on the things they truly want to focus on.
Okay, put another spin on this student thing.
Sure. All right, so, so stay tuned. That would, you will see that again. I did ask the athletic director to ensure me, she did send an email out to all students and posted on the Instagram page for athletics, so the information is there. So I don't follow up with that. Thanks. And that's what I have.
Moving on to committee reports, Policy Committee. Missy has been prompting me to throw out some dates, which I will do. I'm beginning to believe we are, probably will not be able to get the Policy Committee off the ground in earnest until next year. Does that sound right to everybody? So we've got the bus meeting next week. We've got budget meetings coming up.
We do.
We can try and get something on for December. Is everybody, my Policy Committee members are you around in late December, like the last week of the year?
No.
That's, no. Okay. All right, I'll throw out some dates.
Yeah.
No.
Good for you.
I am, bud.
All right, we have any updates on budget?
Actually, I have a question on that.
Yeah.
Can somebody please remind me what the dates are, those handful of dates that we have coming up?
Sure. December 9. And these are the, the dates we put out. It doesn't mean we have to meet every time. I just wanted to make sure we have some calendars, dates. December 9th is 5:30. That's a Monday. That's, that would be before the Board of Education meeting. Thursday, December 12th at 4 o'clock. Oh, and actually, Henzica and Varsha, you both are interested in budget too?
Yes.
Yes, that's right. I'll get these dates to you if you're not catching them now. Tuesday, December 17th at 5:30. And Thursday, December 19th at 4:00.
Did we add anything there or do we always have four dates in December?
I did not add any from that initial email.
Then they should all be on my calendar, okay. The only one I missed, didn't we have one on the 19th?
We did.
Yeah, we had a total of five originally at one point.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. So we had one and then there's four remaining.
What time is the 19th again?
Four.
So we have another one on December 19th, okay. Because we had one last Tuesday, right?
We did.
Okay.
That was November though.
Right, I'm getting my 19th mixed up, okay. That was the one I had to miss because I was away.
Are there, is there going to be a virtual option for that, any of them, or are they all in person?
Virtual? Is that what you're asking?
Will there be an option? I mean, I don't like doing budget workshops virtually, but I know the 19th, I'm not going to be here.
I could, I could always make a virtual option. It's, sometimes it's harder to share everything, but certainly can do that. It is good if you let me know because it's, it's a matter of where I'm going to set up. So if I can be in my office conference space, it's just easier because I have the screen and all our documents. Because if not, I'll set up down the hall, which is fine, but if we're not coming, I prefer to not set up down the hall and stay in there.
Okay, where are these meetings?
Board of Ed Office. So it will either be in my office or down the hallway in the, the music classroom.
Yeah, I could say the, the two that start at 4 o'clock are going to be questionable for me at best
Sure.
to make, so 5:30 is even pushing it, but I could make that.
All right. Curriculum Committee.
Lisa's not here, but I have, I can give the information. Marjorie shared how the new state evaluation guidelines have teachers creating a PD plan for an individual or small group that focuses on a specific goal tied to the student learning and achievement. You know, they need time to accomplish this, so PDEC will be looking at ways to do that. She also shared how small grants support our program in East Granby. It's small compared to other districts, but we're able to utilize it fully to enrich student learning and encourage a sense of belonging for all students attending East Granby Public Schools. Some of the programs include Homer Club at the Middle and High School, Starbase Experience for Grade 5, Seymour After Schools Play and Sports and Interest Clubs across the district. And then she also explained how the state of Connecticut has rescinded the capstone requirement for graduating seniors. Currently, it's still a requirement for East Granby students as it was adopted by the Board of Ed prior to the state requirement. In order to change this, a motion would have to be made by the Board. She outlined that there's not a dedicated class for it, so it is given to the senior English teachers to incorporate into class time. So there's a large number of students who excel with this type of self-driven passion project, but others, it's a burden. The committee discussed this possibility of having an elective, so students who want to pursue it still could in the future.
Sorry, Amanda, what was the, what was the item?
This is for the capstone.
The capstone, okay.
She reviewed discussions she's had with
I'm sorry, could I, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
So what would, I mean, with the change from the state of Connecticut, what would the feeling be with faculty? And what, and what's, I, I gather that Tony is probably Mr. Capstone. I have thought that, that, that he sees the value of it and he involves himself incredibly
Yeah.
with every one of the students that, you know, graduate. So have you gotten any discussion, any feedback from, not just from Tony, but from our other high school faculty members?
The high school faculty members that are probably greatest impacted are our ELA teachers because it's incorporated into their senior class. And actually, we start at the end of junior year with deciding on a, a theme and a, and a topic. It's extremely frustrating for me because the state requirement came down. We, we already had something in process, excuse me. We worked to make it a very kind of viable project and a, and a project that students are proud of and that we're proud of and then it's gone. I'm not sure who helped make that decision. You know, I'm not sure, you know, in some districts, John, it's, it's actually paired out more. There's actually certain courses that align with capstone we've incorporated into. So it's really the, it's an impact to our ELA teachers. I, I think what Amanda's going to continue reading is, you know, we do have it as a, in our policy as a graduation requirement. Do we shift that to an elective so that we still have, you know, that option for students? I'm a little mixed on it personally, but I'm just, you know, one, one person.
Well, so yeah, and I can, so basically, you know, Lisa would ask, was going to ask if we place on the December agenda for us to discuss, you know, the possibility to, you know, if we were to discontinue it as a mandatory thing, would it be this year? Would it be for next year? So that was something that we need to discuss as a board and determine. Are we going to have it be an elective or requirement and when?
And I think if it becomes an elective, we'd actually have to have a course separate because the teachers wouldn't be able to, right now, they've worked it into the curriculum. So it would, it would have to be an elective course or, you know, courses.
So we add it in December, we can stew on it.
So we want to add
All your questions for December.
Yeah, I want to add that as a future agenda item under seven for future meetings.
I think Amanda just did, but when you get down there.
Yeah.
I'll kick her.
Right. Facilities.
Some class meetings. I've begun work on irrigation, hoping to be done before the break here. If not, I'll probably just be wrapping up a couple, one or two things after Thanksgiving break. I was not at the last board meeting, but I know facilities, the last time we, everything looked like it went through except the one thing I'm not sure of, were the two boilers? I know we approved at the facility meeting to put that up to the board. I didn't see that at the 10:28. Did we get those repaired or?
No, I believe that was non-lapsing.
Did we approve that one?
Yes, that, that's, that's
I didn't, I didn't watch them. I was just going
Well, that wouldn't have been approved at the last Board of Finance meeting. Is that what you're talking about?
No, the Board of Ed.
It was approved. Whenever we put it up, it was, I think it was a little bit ago.
Yeah, it was a little bit later.
Okay.
We have a couple
So they've already been repaired though or just waiting for work to be done?
We have a few items going up to Capitol in December 10th town meeting.
Okay.
And that is cameras. That is air conditioning at the Seymour School Gym.
Yep.
And
I didn't bring that with me, so
Knee wall got rejected, correct?
Knee wall, I need to work on a plan for, for the spring, correct.
Okay. That's all I got then. We do Do you need to schedule another meeting to get back on policy or facilities policy for rentals?
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
Negotiation committee? And communications. All right. Moving on to item six, recommended actions. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make approval of the Act of 2024 on the matches.
Can I get a second on that?
Seventy-second?
Yeah.
Mark. Oh, thanks, Mark. Okay, Mary, you want to give us the presentation?
The annual financial report from Mahoney and Sable is almost completed. We did receive draft financial statements and adjusting journal entries last week, or actually the beginning of this week. We have entered the majority of our annual conferences into the 24, 25 school year and we hope to have the rest of them done by the end of November, which is just three days away. There's nothing out of the There's nothing out of the ordinary in the financials for the first four months of fiscal year 2025. We have received our desk audit regarding the educational financial system and a report, which is the E.F.S. report from the state for our final corrections. We've completed them, and we sent them up to the auditor. They will finalize that report no later than January 31st. And then, as you all know, we started our budget process for fiscal year 26. Any questions or comments on the financials? Thank you.
Anything, anything? All those in favor of approving the October 2024 financial reports, say aye, please.
Aye.
Anyone not committed to approving the financial reports? Abstentions? And can I get a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting calendar for 2025?
I'll move approval of the Board of Education meeting calendar for 2025.
A second.
Thank you. All right, so let's take a look at it. Is there anything in particular here that should jump out at us?
Yeah, trying to look at any of the dates that might have conflicts.
I have a question on it. And I'm just trying to understand it. October 13th is highlighted red. It's just not a vacation day, is that correct?
That is Indigenous People Day.
Yeah.
But that's not a day off.
I'm sorry?
It's not a school vacation, correct?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Is it a school vacation day?
Is it a school vacation or not?
But we haven't voted on our calendar for next year yet. We have had it off as a day.
So is anything highlighted around this calendar meant to be a day off?
I don't think so. We had, we didn't have Columbus Day off this year, did we? Or Veterans Day.
We didn't have Veterans Day.
We did not have Veterans Day off.
We have Columbus Day?
I think so.
I think we did.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, they have to be circled to indicate school vacations?
Yes.
All right.
The hollow circles.
Yeah. So school is in session on Martin Luther King Day? Because that's a blue circle, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get, okay. Hit the land, land here.
There is no school year, which is why it's not bothering.
All right, so that should have the, the clear circle around it, then?
What's that?
So apparently, so apparently, the key to this is if it's a clear circle, it's a day off from school. If it's a blue circle, it's just a Board of Ed meeting. So Martin Luther King Day is celebrated on the 20th of January, and there's no clear circle around it. But I think what Mary just said is it's a school holiday.
Uh, yes.
Right, because they're in red, same with Memorial Day is red.
Well, I, that's my thought. So is anything that's in red an actual school holiday?
Yes, red is holidays, circles are vacations.
Then according to this, then we have Columbus Day and Veterans Day off.
That is correct.
That is correct.
Is that correct or not?
Well, I don't think you voted on that. We don't have that voted, so it's on that calendar.
So I guess, my question is, what are we voting, what are we voting on?
We're only voting, folks, we're only voting on the Board of Ed meeting schedule.
Oh, correct.
And I would assume, I would assume that if it's been moved to a Tuesday, it doesn't mean the Monday is a holiday for the district. It just means that we're, meeting-wise, we'll be meeting on the Tuesday.
It's usually driven because the.
With the possibility that it might be a day off from school, but it is not a day off from school until we approve the school calendar.
All right. Oh, I love reaspects, I thought we were voting on the calendar.
Are we doing that the next meeting, the school calendar?
No.
Yes, it's the Board of Education meeting calendar for 2025. No, it does look like it's an agenda item for future meetings, though, Amanda.
The school calendar.
The school calendar, yeah. So, again, apologies, we're just meeting, we're just gonna vote, then, on the
just meeting.
Board of Education meetings on the calendar.
Just meeting, absolutely.
Does anybody have any questions or comments on the meeting schedule?
True, I don't have to be condescending, but the first meeting is the primary, the second is at the, you know, whether or not we.
Either.
It's optional.
It's the optional meeting, yeah.
When we get to.
But we always seem to have them.
When we get to July, we usually only have one.
Okay.
We have taken a couple off, Drew.
Sometimes, June.
All right, are we ready to vote? Everybody in favor of adopting the Board of Education meeting calendar for 2025? Said aye, say aye?
Aye.
All right. Nay? Abstentions? Okay, that is passed, then. And then for future agenda items, for future, agenda items for future meetings, we've got the school calendar for 2025, 26, I guess we got a preview of it. And then we also have the vote on the capstone project, and whether we're gonna continue. So what you want to talk about is whether we're gonna continue to have it be mandatory for East Granby, or just larger issues around it.
Yeah, no, I think it's whether the, and I think it's for this school year or next school year. Does the Board want it to be optional for this school year? I mean, kids have already put hours into it.
They've already started it, yeah.
Yeah, so that's what we need to discuss.
That's a, that's an excellent point, okay. Very, very good.
And then we probably should add for future meetings, bus update, if we're gonna be having that meeting.
Yep, so we'll add bus update as C. Any other agenda items for future meetings? Thoughts from our visitor? Thank you for coming.
I'll go to the chairman.
Sure can. Who wants to second that?
I will.
But I'm gonna let Drew do it.
I'll second.
All right. And it is 7:50.
We got it all in favor, right? Drew told me it's all in favor.
Aye.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, all in favor? Who wants to stay? Abstentions?
Nay to a stay.